I'll call me to order, please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward is by the Nebraska Open Beans Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Beans Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. The participant's sign sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium and state your name and address for the clerk's record and ask limited remarks to five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city should reserve the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back here. Camper?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Hendricks?
First item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of September 3rd, 2019. Move.
Second.
Greg, we're going to say something about the minutes.
Yes, we need to make a, do that motion. Sorry. We need to make a quick amendment to the resolution that was contained in there regards to the budget. When you amended the budget and increased the expenditure amount, the resolution had one requirement that it said an eighteen percent in regards to that. Just by sheer happenstance, you moving that, that eighteen moves to nineteen, that was not done. So if we could get a motion before we approve the minutes to-
To a motion to amend.
I'll, I'll do a motion to amend with your correction.
Sorry, we have a motion in a second to amend for the correction. Please register your votes, please spread the votes.
Welcome back, Camper Coleman, Noah Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Now we get a motion for the consideration of approval of draft minutes. Move. We have a motion in a second for discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please spread the votes.
Welcome back, Camper Coleman, Noah Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Next, we have items two through seven, which is the consent agenda. Second. Motion in a second for a discussion. Saying no, please register your votes, please spread the votes. Alright, item number eight, this is a public hearing. A consideration of tax increment financing, application of Elson Burger Properties LLC. We have with us here tonight our tip attorney Andrew Wallace. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening mayor, council members. The project before you tonight, Elson Burgers, Elson Burger Properties redevelopment project. I will go through quickly the tip application, the amendment to the redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement. I won't go into line by line on any of these, particularly the tip application, and hit a couple of highlights because it really builds into everything else and all go together very similar to what we've seen before. This project is downtown renovation and redevelopment of a building downtown so it really fits in well with the redevelopment plan that exists right now. Pointing out just a couple where the numbers are coming from, the estimated completed value, four hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred thirty dollars when this is done. Again, came from the estimate and the approximation from the Seward County assessor, so that's the number we're using for this project. We can get there. And tip uses in the application, they, the applicant listed out a, a, a long list of the eligible uses. The, the request and the ultimate amount of the TIF, if approved for this project, is eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars. So I really limited it to the, to two uses, kind of the land acquisition demolition, which already are far double that amount, so we didn't go into this other list, but there is other eligible uses listed as well. I would note that this has been before the CRA and the Planning Commission, CRA approved the project, but the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the redevelopment plan for this board. The estimated project costs set out in the TIF application totaling about six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. And so, again, the, the sources of financing proposed are a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars in equity, four hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred in bank loan, and then the eighty-six thousand four hundred in TIF is how that, the applicant, the developer, proposed to pay for the cost of this project. From a, from the, you know, community development law or block four test, I know in the TIF application, the applicant mentions first, just the, the cost of, you know, modernizing, buying the real estate in downtown and then modernizing that building as, as sort of cost prohibitive compared to potentially relocating or building somewhere else or staying put. And so really, that's what we're looking at is the, is that, again, when we look at, you know, building and redeveloping in the redevelopment area versus could you do this project somewhere else or not do the project at all, and that's highlighted in the TIF application and stated well. So most that we took into the amendment to the redevelopment plan, so I'm going to jump into the plan. Again, this, this project really fits well within the redevelopment exist, downtown revitalization and renovation of a, of a downtown building, approximately fifty-six hundred square feet of office space for an accounting firm and financial services. You know, the existing building is, was built in nineteen twenty-eight, and they're going to put about six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars into this project if it's approved. As I mentioned, we really are limiting the TIF use to, it's really going to be land acquisition. It's not going to cover all of the land acquisition part of it, but we put down land acquisition in that preliminary demolition work. So we identified a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of TIF eligible uses in those two items. But again, this request and if approved would be about eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars in TIF granted. Construction, would, uh, intend to commence construction later this year, completing next year. So the base, the base year would be two thousand twenty, with the first year of tax increment financing two thousand twenty-one. And again, current value is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. And our proposed completed valuation is four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars, again, based on the preliminary estimates of the county assessor and, which seems feasible based on the six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars of, of project costs as well. If we look at the statutory elements in exhibit C of the plan amendment, we look at every time, this is about as straightforward as it gets. No property acquisition from the, from the public side, the developer's actually purchased this piece of property. And again, if you recall, based on the change in the statute, we're, we're fine from a timing perspective on that. Population density, no issues there, it's renovating an existing commercial building. Land coverage, zoning, all those issues, it's zoned properly. We don't see, it won't change any footprint or any, you know, coverage issues. Traffic shouldn't, shouldn't affect traffic flows or street layouts, again, no, no anticipated issues there at all. So we'll do the cost benefit analysis, exhibit D, you know, laid out those numbers, four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollar completed value and a hundred, roughly a hundred and forty, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars of the current valuation gives us a incremental, incremental valuation of just over three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, which is about fifty-seven hundred dollars per year in, in tax increment. So using that fifty-seven hundred dollars in tax increment, that would give us the eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars of tax increment financing. And we've discussed this before, but that, it's really the eighty-six thousand dollars is, is a net value, so that would be, there's no interest figured in there, and again, I, it's, it's, either way, it's fine with me, it doesn't make a difference. It's really, which works better for the redeveloper in financing their project. But again, that's the, the way they had, they had proposed and requested the, the funds. Really from, you know, looking at our, the things we look at from cost benefit analysis, this, this is again, pretty straightforward. There's, it's a, there's a lot of benefits here, letting a local business move, increase, grow in size, and helps benefit the downtown and the continued population and revitalization of the downtown. No real negative impacts that are noted in the cost benefit analysis. So it's, the benefits outweighed the costs and we're looking at the project. For the redevelopment agreement, again, this will look very similar to what we've seen. You know, the, the form of the agreement is about the same as we've seen. We've got, again, the effective date would be January first, two thousand twenty-one. So most construction is going to happen next year. If there would happen to be a change in valuation for two thousand twenty, which doesn't seem likely or, you know, be very unlikely, then we have a provision built in that they could request that two thousand twenty be the effective date to make sure they capture the TIF, the total tax increment. Eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars would be the TIF amount for this project. All the same obligations, duties, as we've seen all the TIF projects. We're going to utilize the TIF for, for land costs, us put land costs and demolition in there. But again, it brings down that land cost enough to make the overall investment value work out from the redevelopers' perspective. I think that, I'm happy to answer your questions, but again, I'll leave it at that. This really fits pretty well within the redevelopment plan as it exists now, so the amendment identified the project specifically, but didn't, didn't require a lot, a lot more than that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council? It is a public hearing, so I can open up the public comment portion of the public hearing while the council thinks about questions. Does anyone from the coun, or, so anyone from the public wish to comment on item number eight? If so, please come up to the podium, say your name and address for the clerk's record.
Ryan Berger, Elsburger Properties, one three five North Fifth Street. Good evening, I don't, I think the application kind of stands on its merit, and Ryan Williams and Andrew and his firm have been a, a good partner and resource for the city to kind of build this project. So a couple of things mentioned in that application include job growth and development. Just for your information, we believe we're, we are very close to securing two of those three proposed jobs ahead of moving in. So that's, we can benefit overall. Looks like you have a full agenda, so we want to move it along. If you have questions for myself or Ray, I'm willing to answer any of those questions.
Any questions from the council?
I did have one quick question.
Please.
Looking at your floor plan, it looks like you have a lot of offices in there. Are you planning on using that all for yourself, or are you going to run any of those out?
Yeah, so we try to make it a little bit clear that this is kind of our be all end all project for all future growth, future needs. Just a relative fact of the CPA firms in that area, specifically this town, have owners that Ray and I believe we may outlive, for lack of better words. So to help onboard some of those and keep serving this community.
I'm really happy.
Not specifically trick or anyone in the audience. But just having a place where this is kind of the, the be all end all for us and being able to partner with the community and have spaces for those jobs and that growth and still serving all of the needs of the community and their professional accounting and business needs. So that's a little bit, great question.
Any other questions from the council? If not, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment, and I'll decide them.
Coleman, yes, well.
Please get, say your name and address for the question.
Yep, Reagan Els, twelve twenty eighth Augusta Drive, do you have that written down?
Yeah, at some point, if you feel, you can speak first if you like.
Well, I, I don't think he answered your question. I think our tentative plan is that we will try to fill all those. If, I know we've had a couple conversations where people might have expressed interest in possibly renting an office or two, but that's not our idea behind the design. We're planning on being able to fill it in the next five to ten years adequately to where, you know, it probably just isn't worth it if we can get it about seventy-five percent full. We'd just rather have our space and make sure we can control all the noise and everything else, privacy issues and all those things. So, and, yep, so I am, again, one of the owners with Ryan. Been, lived here and worked here for about ten years now, both Ryan and I went to Concordia, so that's how we had a connection to the town. Definitely been great seeing the city grow and watching the various projects and, you know, helping coach some of the kids in town and all those other facets of living in Seward. So, is there any other questions on the project?
Any other questions from the council? Saying no, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number eight? Seeing no one else, and I will go ahead and close the public, the comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any questions for Andrew? Andrew, where are you? We have a full house tonight.
Yep.
So your presentation covers the A, B, and C.
Yeah, correct.
So next item we have would be B, is consideration of a resolution approving redevelopment plan amendment and adopting the cost benefit analysis for the redevelopment project.
Correct.
Alright, is there any other questions or comments, or someone like to introduce that resolution?
I'll make this resolution to approve.
Alright, um, this res, the resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Some.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please spread the votes.
Welcome back, Camper Coleman, Noah Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item eighty is consideration of a resolution approving the redevelopment agreement for a redevelopment project, including the issuance of TIF indebtedness for redevelopment project and other such actions under the community development law. Would anyone like to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce it.
The resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
A move, second.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please spread the votes. Alright, thank you. Item number nine, this is also a public hearing, consideration for approval of the preliminary plat, Twin Oaks Development Seventh Edition. Greg, would you want to start this off?
Yeah, I will come for Ed tonight, and I did attend the planning and zoning meeting that held all these items. Uh, this is a replat of the Twin Oaks Development, just behind the industrial lots located on Pine Street. The applicant is Roger Lindner, and this is property to be located, basically a lot from Cottonwood Street should be extended down to, or not Cottonwood, I'm sorry. It goes from York Street.
Tree Street, one of the trees.
Yeah, the tree street, sorry. I grabbed my other one here. To give you a sense of place, on page one twelve of your packet, if you want to get a location, there's a vicinity map. And then that street right on the southern portion on the bottom of yours, not southern, but to the east is Pine Street. So currently Roger has those, a few of those industrial lots there located on Pine Street. This will be located directly behind with an extension of Walnut and I believe Spruce.
Yeah, on this big one.
Yep, okay. And to not belabor this one, this is a preliminary plat. Uh, the largest item of concern for administration between Jake, Ed, myself, and Tim Richdig with our water waste, water department was the extensions of Walnut Street and Spruce Street. I think it was the intent of the developer to have the lot extend all the way from Walnut to Spruce as a preference. But initially, it was requested prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that a full water loop be installed, starting on Pine Street, extending to the west along Walnut, and then looping around the entirety of Lot One, and then coming back on Spruce. That was discussed and included in the subdivision agreement, and there was some discussion back and forth about that at planning and zoning. Ultimately, we filled in a few more details, went back to Tim Richdig, because that was at his request. Uh, and it was noted out with the help of Jeff Wagner, that this item, that just a stubout to the end of Walnut before the cul-de-sac in a fire hydrant, and then a stubout to the end of Spruce Street in a fire hydrant. We're not so much worried about capacity and pressures in this low-lying area. We have really good pressure on the south side. It was stagnant water. At the point that we kind of divulged to Tim, here's what the anticipated use of this lot is, he went, oh, so they're not going to be drinking the water right now. And we went, no, because the real problem with those long drawn-out runs without a loop system is stagnant water. Uh, and the other one that we had as a concern was for fire. When we did our fire radius on the current hydrant positions, uh, this middle portion of the lot to the back was not covered by a sufficient radius for fire purposes. And so that's why we did add the hydrants at the end rather than just a full stubout. Uh, and this will also give an opportunity to, the subsequent development to either extend out further to the west, provide a loop if they want, uh, and we can also flush these. So I think in working with Mr. Wagner, who's busy, but I, and they may get up and speak to this specifically. But we think without having the loop in there, that's resolved our issues preliminarily, and then we can move forward with the final plat. But I'll let either the developer or the, the engineering team for the developer get up and speak to it more. That was the predominant issue. Other than that, we had no concerns about the lot, uh, its development. Uh, we will denote, uh, just because of the nature of the size of the lot, the detention cell that's located here for stormwater runoff that will then run into that little creek bed that goes into the larger pond to the north, right, that Cottonwood. And so this is designed in there, this can be removed later as development furthers along, and they can utilize a different element here as they continue to develop west, uh, up close to the, the waterway there. Questions?
This is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward to the podium, welcome.
Good evening, Jeff Wagner, Manoe Wagner Associates, sixty-nine twenty Van Dorn Street, Lincoln. As Greg stated, we had discussions with city staff concerning the, looping the water main. We've all pretty much come to agreements, where it's reflected in the plan that you have and the subdivision agreement. Our anticipation is, is that future development will move to the west and between the waterway and the west side of Lot One, it, it, there's enough room there to make a street loop through there, and that's the logical place for the water main to be looped. So, that being said, I'm more here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Saying none, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number nine? Seeing no one else wishing to comment on item number nine, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the council? I believe this item nine A is a consideration of approval of the subdivision agreement for Twin Oaks Seventh Edition. It requires a motion.
Move approved.
Is that right?
Did I have to prove it to the mayor?
Should be for the preliminary.
Consideration of approval for the subdivision agreement?
No, nine itself is considered.
Oh, I, okay, so we have nine and a nine A, okay. So first we have for nine, consideration of approval of a preliminary plat, and then we go to nine A. We have a motion for approval, we have a motion in a second. Waiting for the discussion, saying no, please register your votes, please spread the votes. And then nine A is a consideration of approval of the subdivision agreement for Twin Oaks Seventh Edition.
Move approved. Second.
We have a motion in a second, waiting for the discussion, saying no, please register your votes, please spread the votes. Alright, item number ten, this is a, also public hearing, consideration of special use permit, application for lots four through six, lot thirty-eight, HMNR addition, ten fifty-three South Street, Seward to operate a trade services occupancy. Greg, would you want to start this off?
Yes, um, basically I'll run through real quick the administrative report. Subjects located in urban corridor zoning district with adjacent R four, urban residential multifamily zoning districts to the east and south, use, and additional UC districts to the north and west. The applicant is Blue River Properties, Corey Mueller. Mr. Mueller first came into the zoning office to apply for a signed permit. Mueller indicated that he had an old novelty sign that he wanted to put out on his place of business, and city staff knew that Mr. Mueller was an electrician, and then discovered that it was considered a commercial use type under the definition of trade services, uh, which is only allowed in a UC district with a special use permit. Mr. Mueller wasn't advised of this, and when he bought the property and started moving in about a year and a half ago. And so Mr. Mueller filed for the application to just kind of clean this item up. Uh, there's also some spin classes, uh, which qualify as personal improvement under the O L D, the same occupancy, but that is a permitted use. Uh, this item was heard by Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting and recommended approval unanimously.
Any questions for Greg? It is a public hearing, so I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on item number ten, please come forward. Seeing no one wishing to comment, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? It is a consideration, so I believe all we need is a motion.
Move approved. Second.
We have a motion in a second, is any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes, please spread the votes. Item number eleven, it's also a public hearing, this is consideration of an ordinance vacating sanitary sewer easement, Lot Eight, Seward Heights Fourth Edition, twenty seventy-seven metal lane. Greg?
Yes, uh, this is a old abandoned sanitary sewer line, uh, that I don't even know, looking at the ASBILTS. I'm going to check with Al. Al, you never, you never found it while you were down there digging around, did you?
No, I don't think they ever moved it.
Okay. Hard to tell on your map here, but it's this corner lot with the two oh seven marked on it down here. On the northern border of that lot was this original easement that was stated in the original plat. It was a request of the builder owner to have that vacated for the purposes of fitting on, uh, not the actual building. The building itself is not in the easement now, but for any eccentricities that go out into it, whether it's a patio, a egress window, or anything else, you want to ensure that that's not there, not an issue later. And since we knew from looking at our GIS, verifying with our maps and ASBILTS and talking to Tim Richdig, it was recommended to vacate the sanitary sewer easement because it serves no need. The way that we loop it up through metal lane, uh, gives us absolutely no need for it. And so we confirmed that with Tim, brought it forth for planning and zoning the other day. We had a few comments about it, but nobody in the negative, they just wanted to ask some more questions about it, some of the neighbors around there. Uh, and then ultimately it was approved by planning and zoning unanimously.
Any questions? Yes?
How's it wasn't found before the house was even built? You know, they're building back there, that's what caused this to be found, wasn't the title service found it?
I think it was. Yeah.
We've always known it was there.
Oh, okay.
I think it was just the notation of, of Mr. Underwood finding it and then recognizing that there is, by asking the questions, there's nothing there, which is not unusual. You acquire some of these through different plating and things like that, and as you plan out, you end up finding that your depths are different or something else in regards to your sanitary sewer, and you go a different direction as you build houses out and go. And it was just recognized through Al's work and then also working with Tim Richdig in the GIS and doing some on-site review, that there's nothing there, and there never will be anything there.
I just thought that it should have been cotton for the house that he's building.
I mean, we have hundred-year-old easements that are sitting around that are probably vacant at this point.
You didn't know? Item? Who might want it sometime?
I'll make landlords, yeah.
Alright, I think you're right. Um, it's a public hearing, so I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Uh, if anyone from the public wishes to comment on item number eleven, please come forward this time. Seeing no one stampeding to the podium, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number eleven. Any other questions or comments from the council? Uh, this is an ordinance, so we need, at the appropriate time, when he's going to introduce the ordinance.
I will introduce your ordinance.
Alright. An ordinance to vacate the sanitary sewer easement on the north side of Lot Eight in the plat entitled Seward Heights Fourth Edition, as here and after set forth, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by Tato and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-five, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So.
We have a motion in a second, is any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes, please spread the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-five. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted, is that right?
Comment. Second.
We have a motion in a second, is any further discussion? Saying no, the question is to ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-five, be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes, please spread the votes. Alright, thank you. Item number twelve is also a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending the Unified Land Development Ordinance, Article thirty-one, Supplemental Use Regulations, four ten dash thirty-one point five, G kennels. Greg, would you like to take that?
Yes, uh, we had an applicant who was looking in the extraterritorial jurisdiction outside of Seward to put in a kennel facility, a day, kind of a doggy daycare center. Uh, and in doing so, came in to get a special use permit, which was required, and then started looking through all the special regulatory elements that were involved in that, what we call the supplemental use regulations. And it was denoted that part of those, as you can see in section G titled kennels, of those, as you can see in section G titled kennels, uh, one, that the minimum lot size has to be two acres, which predominantly out in the rural residential and agricultural area we're, we're good with. And then two, no building or dog runs or exterior kennel shall be located nearer than, uh, what at the time was a hundred feet to any property line and five hundred feet to the property line of any residential use or district. And when we got to the five hundred feet to the property line of any residential use, when I did the math, you could have a ten acre lot that was rural residential, which we allow in rural residential districts by special use permit kennels. You basically cannot get one on a ten acre lot if you have five hundred feet in every direction, because that's a thousand by one thousand foot, uh, lot line.
That's also my, onerous in some livestock setbacks.
Yes. We also found that in rural, just rural residential, if you were just in a subdivision of all rural residential, you could put in, uh, approximately a five hundred chicken, uh, barn on your own, just for your own uses, fifty feet from the property line. And so we went, this seems really random.
I might know something about that.
And, and so we tasked, uh, we tasked the development department, so engineering, uh, and Mindy did a lot of the research for us. We went through all the cities in southeast Lincoln that we predominantly do, and we do research to find out what other cities do in similar situations. And so as, as you've heard before, Crete, uh, Beatrice, Lincoln, Fremont, Wahoo, Blair, um, Grand Island, Hastings, Nebraska City, um, a, a number of other communities. We researched all the same communities and we applied the same rule to see how they treat kennels out in rural residential and agricultural districts. And we came back and we found out that we had the most restrictive one there is out of all those cities. And so pursuant to that, uh, administration and Ed made the recommendation that you see before you here in your report, which is to decrease that one hundred feet to any property line to fifty feet, and then the five hundred feet to any property line of residential use, uh, to a hundred and fifty. Um, this was taken to planning and zoning commission. Uh, we had a number of people come in, uh, to speak about this item, and ultimately it was recommended and amended by planning and zoning commission to reduce that second number, thus you'll see in your ordinance that's drafted for you, down from a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred feet. They felt like that was more in line with what we saw in the other communities. Many of the communities, it was fifty feet, if not zero, in a lot of those agricultural districts. Um, and so we felt, uh, that that was appropriate, and that was the recommendation of planning and zoning, is what you have drafted for you right now, uh, in your, uh, ordinance on page one sixty-eight of your packet. And so based on our research and based on the recommendation of planning and zoning, this is all we have for you. We can answer any other questions about the draft or kennels in particular, if you'd like.
Any questions from the council? This is a public hearing, so I can go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to comment on item number twelve, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one wishing to comment, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number twelve. This is an ordinance, so at the appropriate time, I'll ask someone to introduce the ordinance, but until then, is there any questions or comments from the council? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter four-ten, zoning and subdivision, article thirty-one, supplemental use regulations, to adjust setback requirements for commercial kennels, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-six, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-six. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted? Is red. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none. The question is the ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-six. Be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right. Thank you. Item number thirteen is also a public hearing. This is a presentation and discussion of functioning and progress of the Seward Economic Development Plan. Greg?
Yep. Uh, semi-annually, I sit down, uh, with the CRC committee. It's an oversight committee to just be another check on the LBA forty economic development program. So we walked them through, uh, first, all the activity reports for the, um, last six-month period, which was a period reporting through, I believe, July thirty-first, from February first through July thirty-first. Uh, not a ton of activity at that time. Uh, probably our biggest one is the Fury Building, Green Future Properties, and so they had a lot of questions about that one. And then the second distribution, if you recommend, remember, that one had a two-distribution element to it. That second distribution was made right around the time of this meeting. So we didn't go in on that. Uh, and so we updated on what was happening over the last six months, and then we also did review the general ledger and give them an opportunity to go over that, check out how cash flows are going in and out, answer some questions. And so with that, they, uh, they recommended that everything looks good, as you can see in their report that they provided you here, but I can't hear questions.
Any questions for Greg? It is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on item number thirteen, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one wishing to comment, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number thirteen. Are there any other questions or comments for Greg? I assume, uh, it would be appropriate to have a motion to accept the plan? We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number fourteen is the reappointment of Sue Bowen to the planning commission for a three-year term.
Move for a second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right. Item fifteen, consideration of funding agreement with Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. I believe Jonathan Jenk is here this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Jonathan Jenk with the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. I also have her here tonight, Mike Fellhoffer, who is our current chairperson. I also have a couple of board members also, I mean, in the audience, Gerald Hump and Roger Reamer, um, this evening as well. Um, and also specifically Ellen Beck. We appreciate her representation on our board of directors, and she's been a really great representative on behalf of the city of Seward and also Jessica previously serving on our board as well. So we're grateful for that.
Becky's here too.
Oh, and Becky is. I'm sorry. I asked you Becky. Yes, and Becky as well, representing the county. So we're, we're grateful for all that, uh, investment of time. Um, we're also grateful for the city of Seward's investment in our organization financially over the last year. We want to be accountable to the work that we've been doing over the last year, and so that's what I'm going to review tonight before we consider the new agreements before you. Um, I will pass out here our, uh, funding agreements from this last fiscal year, so we can review that together. So the document that we're going to focus on to begin with is the, um, second and third pages there, the white documents before you. Briefly walk through the substantive parts. Um, the agreement was from October one to September thirtieth, so obviously we're coming up to the close of that. The city's annual investment was sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in the SCCDP for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen, and it was spent towards the operations of our organization and according to Nebraska State statute, and the state statute is on page three of the document. The public funds were and are segregated in a separate bank account. They've only been used for the purposes of economic development, and there is an annual audit conducted within sixty days of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, to ensure compliance with the agreement, and we sent out the report as we have in the past, uh, which was approved by our full board of directors after review. We would like you to consider renewing your support of economic development efforts and sort of accounted for entering into a new funding agreement and public membership agreement with our organization for your upcoming fiscal year, and, uh, those are two agenda items that are, are before you. I'd like to briefly highlight some of our economic development projects we've been working on in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. So that's the blue document before you that we're going to review. Uh, these developments have taken place all across the county and are highlighting just a few of our recent projects. Over the last eighteen months, uh, there have been over a hundred million dollars in new commercial projects either started or announced, uh, in Seward County. So you can see that we are a growing county. I'd like to point your attention to one quote in particular, and it's from Amy Patterson, uh, from Schooler. Um, everyone's obviously aware of their project on the rail campus. I'd like to read that now. "On behalf of all my colleagues at the Schooler Company, I'd like to extend our appreciation to Jonathan Jenk, Suzanne Gladorvich, and Megan Kaler for all of their tremendous support over the past year. I commend the SCCDP Board of Directors and the city of Seward's leadership for investing proactively over the years with an eye towards bringing future investment to Seward County. The entire team at the SCCDP worked proactively and reactively to answer questions and provide valuable insight into our site evaluation process, public announcement, and ongoing plans for our new business facility. Especially valuable to us was the difficult task of doing all of this work without the ability to be fully transparent and public until this past spring. Jonathan and his team worked tirelessly to advocate for Seward County and provide valuable information about the available workforce, investment locations, and infrastructure opportunities within the Seward community. It is incredibly valuable to see the strong relationships between the SCCDP and the city leaders within Seward County. Jonathan and the SCCDP have made Seward County and the community of Seward an exciting and attractive place to invest, establish, and grow our business. We look forward to the future together." I wanted to share this because I think this quote does a nice job of highlighting, uh, the work that we do on behalf of new businesses that are interested in investing in Seward County, but also existing businesses as well to grow here. I'm fortunate to have two other, uh, hardworking teammates, Suzanne Gladorvich and Megan Kaler. Obviously, their, uh, efforts on the Schooler project did not go unnoticed, um, and, and they were a critical part of the team, but you get to see a lot of their work through our quarterly reports that we send out, um, to the city council, and you're welcome to answer questions as those come out. I'll just say on a personal basis, we're really fortunate to work in our jobs. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have, um, to really be stewards of this community in this county that we really love. I might have Mike Fellhoffer with me tonight, and he's gonna briefly talk about his role on our board of directors, as chairperson, the progress he's seen in the organization, and why his private business, Breeza Industrial, chooses to invest in membership with the SCCDP. Mike?
Welcome.
Hello. I'm Mike Fellhoffer, uh, one fifty-two Nebraska Street, Utica. Um, my business is Breeza Industrial in Utica, Nebraska. We're a small business on the outside of Seward, so most of you don't even know who we are. That's okay. Um, I'd like to thank the council, in case you throw me out of here early, for two things first. One for, uh, Ellen, being my mentor last year. Uh, she taught me everything I know about public speaking and, uh, how to run the organization, so, uh, don't snicker. You did a good job. All right. So I want to thank you for letting me borrow her to be trained. Uh, also want to thank Jonathan and his crew. Uh, you're all aware that Jonathan was, uh, economic developer of the year for the state of Nebraska, so again, he makes me look pretty good, so I want to thank Jonathan for getting that award and making me look good. Um, being a member, uh, it's, it's done a number of things. When I first joined, I wasn't quite sure what I was getting into, and as we, or I and my wife and some of my teammates and, uh, business partners started coming to some of the meetings, we met people across the county. We didn't even know we're here, and of course, they met us and didn't know where we were at either. Uh, couples, one success story is, uh, the Montag family from Melford. We went to their open house, and I think we might have been the only business-to-business that was there. Uh, there was a lot of people there, but we were the only business-to-business there. Um, Roger was in my building today. He's the dad, and the guys come over all the time. We're doing prototype parts for him. We've got, uh, parts that we've made in Utica that go to the Montag facility that have actually been exported overseas now. So a pretty cool relationship, and all started with us being an industry economic development. Then, um, this one kind of happened on its own. Uh, it's part of us, but it's part of our growth as a business. Um, anybody watch NASCAR? Anybody heard of Chase Elliott? Okay, car nine, I, Breeza Industrial builds the cooling system for his NASCAR this year. We've been seven years working with our partner in Alabama, Dobbs Thermal Systems, to develop a cooling system that's approved by NASCAR, Xfinity, and the Truck Series. So, that being said, this is our first year. Four weeks ago, NASCAR finally released us to be in races. We've been on test tracks for two years, wind tunnels and the like, but now we have ten teams that are running us on, at the next race. So, we're small, we're from Utica, but we're making parts for NASCAR out of Utica. So, you know, hats off to Seward County. We're doing great things, and there's a lot of us around the county to do little things that nobody ever knows about. So, there we are. That's good for me. Um, my big thing is when I joined the group, it was water, the grass is growing. It's nice to encourage new business. It's nice to recruit. It's nice to go after things, but water, the grass is growing. I think we've done a pretty good job of that, and I kind of point my fingers and sometimes I bring that up, that let's take care of our, our local people as well as trying to recruit the new people, because sometimes it's just the littlest push with those of, those of us that are already here to take that next step. So, that's part of the reason that you're going to invest in our group and continue to support us. So, um, in closing, I'd say, please support us. Uh, I think our record stands for itself. We're, we're doing good things, and if you've got any questions, I'm willing to take them right now.
Any questions from the council or comments? Saying none. Thank you. And Jonathan, thank you as well?
Yes.
Did you think one to add?
Just, in closing, um, just want to say again, thank you for, uh, the city's investments in our organization over the past years. And last year, we asked our public sector members to make the same investment that they made the year before, and we're asking for the same investment this year. We're asking this because our level of economic development project and impact, uh, continues to increase, and so your investment is just as critical for this year as it has been in past years. I mean, just to, um, remind you that the public sector investment in our organization is about a third of our total budget. Um, and so specifically, our request is to the Seward City Council to consider investing, um, for your upcoming fiscal year with a sixty-seven thousand dollar five hundred, uh, sixty-seven five hundred, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollar investment in our organization, and we'd be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions? Seeing none. For item fifteen, this is a consideration of funding agreement with Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. Do we need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Did you want to add anything before we go on to sixteen? Okay. Item sixteen is consideration of membership agreement with the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. I need a motion as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you to everyone else who's here on behalf of the organization. We appreciate all that you do. Item number seventeen, consideration for approval of the installation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Columbia Avenue, north of Jackson Street, at the clinic crosswalk in partnership with Memorial Healthcare. Jake, welcome.
Um, so, um, thanks, bud. So earlier this year, we installed a rectangular rapid flashing beacon for RRFP on Highway fifteen, uh, through NDOT in their kind of recommendation. Um, so I felt like, um, the installation went pretty well. Uh, so far, I feel like, uh, the product is working the way it should, and although I don't have statistics, I feel like it's a much more effective, uh, system for communicating pedestrians at a crosswalk than, uh, the flashing light that was there before. Um, so after we had that installed and through kind of our coordination with, um, Memorial Healthcare- So, after we had that installed and through kind of our coordination with Memorial Healthcare, um, during the Columbia Avenue, um, improvements project, um, there was a request made by Roger Reamer, CEO of Memorial Healthcare, who's here tonight, to possibly look at installing one of these at their crosswalk. And you might know it's a very busy crosswalk and just standing there for, for not very long. And especially, well, for me, especially during my time spending out there during the project, I can definitely see there was a lot of, a lot of pedestrian traffic at that crosswalk. So, I definitely felt like, um, given, you know, what, what I've seen at the, the RFP that we have installed, that, uh, it would be a good product and a good solution for, uh, the crosswalk at the, at the hospital as well. So, in discussion with the, the hospital, um, I kind of got a proposal in front of you tonight to get that done. Got any questions, both me or Roger? I'm sure he, you know, you think.
Any questions from the council?
Greg, is that button activated or motion sensitive?
Yep, button activated. Yep, so there's a lot of different options, but that one, I seem to be the most straightforward. Everyone kind of seems to understand that you push a button and it turns on.
Any other question?
Just to comment, and maybe Roger will speak there tonight. But Roger did provide Jake and I a copy of, I think, an engineering study or a, uh, planning study that was done in 2015, is that correct?
Right.
Uh, that made different recommendations. One was to move the location of the crossing from, I think, the corner south to its current location, which was done. We also re-signed it to make sure that the signs were located directly upon it. Uh, and then improvements were made to their parking lot when they resurfaced that with adding the fence to coordinate and coordinate everyone and focus them into that point. Uh, but we still find, the last recommendation it was actually in that was to also install a light-activated system like this one, um, that was in that study. And so, uh, the only thing we'll say is I know that me and Jake went out there and I think the way that we read it, and you guys know it because you go through it all the time, I guess, is that local traffic is adjusted to it, they understand what's going on. And it seems like non-local traffic, which we get a lot of with the schools and the ball fields and people going out to the north end, uh, don't, for some reason, stop. Jake and I got done talking to Roger when we were meeting about this, we were like, let's go cross it, see what happens. We walk up to it, we're standing right at the edge of it. Non-local traffic goes right by us while at the exact same time, somebody else is stopping at the 16th count. And so, due to the nature of the patients, their safety, those people that we see going back and forth every single day at that, is our, probably one of our most used crosswalks, we also feel that this is probably the best recommendation for the site.
Would, did you want to add anything, Roger? Thank you, Jake.
Roger Reamer, if you're going to North Columbia.